Yep. Are we on? Next item on the agenda is approval of the March 3, 2015 minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I so move.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is Comprehensive Plan Update Final Review of Draft Revised Vision Statement Memo and Attachment. I call to the presentation table the Director of Community Development and the City's Senior Planner.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And so, before we get going on this, I just wanted to remind everyone, and especially the newer members, that we're now in the process of updating elements of the comprehensive plan in more of a making sure they're consistent. It's not a sort of a robust update, so keep that in mind as we bring forward these next set of elements. So we're updating all the background information and we're kind of tweaking some of the policies where needed, but again, just keep that in mind. If any of these elements that we were bringing up you feel should have more of a substantive review, then that's something you can kind of put aside and maybe suggest as a future docket item. So it's not that you can't ever touch it, but now's not the time. And the reason I say that is you have only a couple of meetings left to get through the rest of this material. And there is a lot of material to get through, especially at the March 31 meeting. And so I'm just warning you now that at the March 31 meeting, we may have to go a little bit longer to get through it because the alternative is we're going to have to hold a meeting the following week in order to stay on track and meet the public hearing date on the 20th. So just kind of setting the table here before we get going. So we have a few items on the agenda this evening, a couple of them should be pretty quick. And so I'm going to turn it over to Laurie to get going.
And I might just add for the newer commissioners that when we took this project in a joint meeting with the commission and the council last fall, we explained to them that there would be a number of elements that we would not be doing really substantive amendments to. So I just wanted you to know that we had cleared that with the city council so they're not expecting full rewrites of these remaining chapters. So with that, we'll get started. The first item on the agenda was final review of the revised draft vision statement. You all made a number of edits and moved the different bullet points around. Again, organizing them, the first section was on special natural assets. The next section was sort of functional aspects of the city. And the last section was about people in the community. And so hopefully I captured all of the comments and changes that you requested. I had recommended one additional change, and I put that in there, and that was to change one word, provides, to offers. Mark Orinshall is not here tonight, but I know he at least was very concerned that there were two provides in that particular bullet point. So I tried to address that concern. So I, as a first step, wanted to be sure that you were comfortable with that. And then I had two comments I received from individual council members that I wanted to share with you as well.
Any objections to the proposal? None? Okay.
Okay. So again, these are from individual council members, so certainly not directed by the full city council. Councilmember Danuski had raised a question about the bullet that talks about healthy lifestyle. It used to talk about healthy lifestyle, and we changed that to healthy citizenry. Anyway, she, I think, felt that healthy lifestyle and healthy citizenry meant different things. She was less comfortable with citizenry. However, she said that was something that when we have the joint meeting on April 20th, could be discussed at that time, but I just wanted to bring that comment up to you. And then Mayor Baker, the comment about transportation, he had, he didn't change really the substance of that bullet point, but he was recommending some reorganization of it so that, for example, sidewalks, bikeways, and trails. You're all familiar with the bullet point I'm talking about. Sidewalks, bikeways, and trails move ahead of transit routes in that list of means of transportation. He also suggested that the word safe be added before streets. So it would actually read, "Provides a safe, reliable, and effective system of safe streets, sidewalks, bikeways, trails, and transit routes, linking significant." And then he flipped local and regional. So local came first and regional came second. Again, not really a substantive change, but a comment that he made, thinking that you might want to think about reordering of those items. So those were the two council member comments that we received that when the vision, the draft vision statement went out to all of the council. And we encouraged them to make comments if they had some.
Anybody want to take up those comments?
Can I just ask a question? So those are the recommendations of things that they would like to change. And is that something we would address at that April 20th meeting?
You can handle this a number of different ways. Again, these were comments from individual council members, so it was certainly not a direction from the city council. If you, if the majority of you hear something that you think would be appropriate and you want to make the change, you can do that. If you want to save it and discuss it with the council on April 20th, that is another approach.
Anybody?
Sure.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. So on bullet four, to Mayor Baker's point of moving the word safe in front of the word streets, does that remove it as an adjective that applies to transit routes, sidewalks, and bikeways as well? In other words, does it become specific to streets? Or does it remain an adjective like reliable and effective?
That is a very good question. Provides a safe, reliable, and effective system of safe streets. I see your point. I see that point.
Safe, reliable, and effective are the adjectives that apply to streets, transit routes, sidewalks, bikeways, and trails.
Yes, Carol.
There is one way we could solve that problem, just by adding a comma. Instead of it saying, "Provides a safe, reliable, and effective system of streets," you could say, "Safe, reliable, comma, and effective system of streets." And so those three adjectives actually apply to everything in the list.
I think they do anyway.
Yeah, they do now.
It's just some people have a tendency to put what's called the serial comma, to leave it out of the second to last thing. I prefer to put it in each adjective.
I do too.
Yeah. But I think it's a stylistic thing. Substantively, I think it modifies all the words that follow. I mean, and to Mike's point, I think that the mayor's suggestion on the word safe is redundant. A safe system of safe streets is sort of overkill.
Was he, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. Was he suggesting that we leave safe as the third word in the sentence and then add safe?
Correct.
Yeah, he was wanting to do a double.
Correct. He wanted it to read, "Provides a safe, reliable, and effective system of safe streets, sidewalks, bikeways, trails, and transit routes."
That's redundant, yeah.
Through which people could safely drive, walk, and bike.
I see foreheads nodding at redundancy.
Yeah, but you know what? I kind of like, and I'm sorry to jump in, but I kind of like the rest of what he proposed. I think safe is, the second safe is redundant, but then moving some of the words around, I think was a reasonable suggestion.
So he had ordered it, streets, sidewalks, bikeways, trails, and transit routes. So really, the change was to move transit routes to the end of that list.
And then didn't he switch local and regional?
Correct.
Which I like.
Yeah.
Okay, so you all agree with all the other changes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Deborah, I think I skipped you before.
Well, I had exactly the same comment. Yeah.
All right.
Okay. I do have one other comment. Just in terms of formatting, I think when you do ellipses, usually the end of the sentence is also the three dots. I mean, I don't, I don't know. It's just, that's sort of a stylist well in that periods, but maybe not. I don't know. I mean, that's neither here nor there, but they kind of, you know, they're not capitalized and there's no, so I don't know how you want to deal with that. And then the only other com-
Can we go back?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you mean at the opening paragraph?
Well, the opening paragraph has the three dots and then all of the bullet points, or bullet points instead of dot, I don't know. It's stylistic. I don't know if it's that, it's probably not that important.
It's worth it. I don't like ellipses, but.
Oh, okay. Well, we could have, actually you could put a colon. That would probably work better.
Right, would you prefer a colon?
At the end of a full stop, not in the middle. It's not a pause. So it'd be grammatically incorrect to put a colon there, but you could get rid of the ellipses.
And just have that?
Yep.
And then the bullet points?
Yeah. I think it would be professional that way.
I see three heads nodding. There's the fourth.
It's stylistic thing that implies a pause.
Yeah.
But it, to me, looks kind of-
The only other comment that I had was, and this I just want to run by you guys. The opening paragraph, not the bullet points, I think you did a great job recasting those the way we talked about, but the opening paragraph, is there any interest in making that stronger? And I just took out a bunch of words and said, you know, "Twenty years from now, Kenmore will be a place that residents, businesses, and visitors will find welcoming, courteous people, and a high quality of life is a place to live, raise children, blah de blah de blah." But I mean, it is a vision statement, so I get that there's the word we see, so I don't know. The one thing that does bother me a little bit is the special.
We're special.
We're special. I don't know. I'd like to take that out at least.
Harrison Keeler put that in, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So at the minimum, I guess I'd propose taking out the word special. You know, and just go, "Special with," and then just, you know, "Find welcoming, courteous people." And the people don't offer the high quality of life, so I think we do need to change the grammar in there. So, something like that.
I like striking special.
Okay.
I don't like putting in will because you're overselling it.
Yeah, okay.
Because we can't be sure.
So how about the proposal is to take out the words, "Special with," and then figuring out what to do with the comma after people so that it's grammatically works.
You know, it doesn't not work.
Oh, does it?
Well, I mean, it depends how you read it. That visitors, let's see, businesses and visitors find welcoming. You know, the problem is the parallelism.
Yeah.
Yeah, because gerund, and then you have this modified noun.
Place that residents, businesses, and visitors.
That's why it sounds clumsy.
Welcome and courteous people. Well, what I would suggest is, "Visitors find welcoming, courteous people, and that offers a high quality of life is a place to-"
Well, I would strike people.
Oh. Visitors find welcoming and courteous.
Offers.
That works.
It doesn't quite work.
No, you can't really have courteous in there without the people because-
Yes, you can. It implies people. Well, it's an animating word. I mean, it's an animating adjective.
Visitors will find-
Hard to think of who, what non-animate thing would be courteous. But I'm just thinking about the style.
Yeah.
The point Deb is making is it doesn't really flow because there's no, you don't have the same conjugation with each item in the series.
Could we start by determining whether special is coming out?
Yeah. We got two. Any others? We got it, okay, three. We got it, sure, four.
Okay.
I'll placate you, five. See, that's coming out.
How about, "Find welcoming with courteous people, comma, offering a high quality of life." And "Offering a high quality of life," period, Kenmore.
Yeah, that works.
Find welcoming.
It kind of, I think it cries out for another sentence. Like you're trying to put so much into that one sentence.
Yeah, it's definitely a run-on sentence.
Three lines, almost three line sentence. So, "Find welcoming and courteous."
Well, what if, as we look into the future, twenty years from now, we see Kenmore as a place that residents, businesses, and visitors find welcoming with courteous people, offering a high quality of life, period.
But then we're going back to Deb's point, the people don't really offer the high quality of life. And that reads as if the courteous people are offering the high quality of life.
Exactly.
Unless it was, that was the intent.
But I think that doesn't make sense because we're more than just the people. It's the, the quality of life is the sum of all the features of the city. Right.
Right. How about this? "As we look into the future, twenty years from now, we see Kenmore as a place that residents, businesses, and visitors find welcoming with courteous people, period. Kenmore offers a high quality of life is a place to live, raise children, blah blah blah."
That's better.
Yeah, Kenmore will, then, because this is the vision, right? So.
Ken, are we back to will?
Oh, well, I mean, see, that's why it works as one sentence because, you know, it's a vision.
Welcoming and courteous people. Kenmore will offer a, you're right, the will works better. We got to have a verb there. Go ahead.
Could it be, "As we look into the future, twenty years from now, we see Kenmore as a place that residents, businesses, and visitors find welcoming with courteous people and which offers a high quality of life, blah 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 blah."
That works.
Yes, that works.
You still have the "as a place" phrase twice in the same sentence.
You do.
You have Kenmore as a place, and then you have high quality of life as a place.
That's good, that's good.
And that feels redundant.
That does, yes.
As if that should be two sentences.
Or just take it out the second time.
Right, yeah. You could take it out of the second one and just say, "Which offers a high quality of life to live, raise children, shop, work, recreate, and socialize."
That sounds much cleaner.
Yeah.
And at the risk of really going heavy grammar geek here, when you say, "Which offers,"
That.
Yeah, right, you're on to it.
Oh, yeah.
"That offers" is the grammatically preferable.
Okay, so shall I read it back?
Yes.
Okay. "As we look into the future, twenty years from now, we see Kenmore as a place that residents, businesses, and visitors find welcoming with courteous people and that offers a high quality of life to live, raise children, shop, work, recreate, and socialize."
Yeah.
Okay, I see lots of heads nodding.
So one other question. Are we committed to leaving twenty years from now in there? Because that's relevant in 2015. But in 2017, twenty years from now, and in 2035 will no longer make sense unless you know that your point of reference is 2015.
You do, I think, right?
I think we know that.
Does?
Yeah, I think we'll see that anybody who sees this will know that this was, well, first they can infer that from that language, but it was fixed at a certain point in time.
Let me turn my commentary in a different way.
Okay.
Does this paragraph suffer from the deletion of twenty years from now?
Actually, it doesn't. I mean, I think it's more economical and says the same thing without the twenty years from now because it's implicit in the 2035. In fact, it's better, as Mike says, because it then doesn't have this-
Doesn't limit it.
-confusion created by the twenty years.
Okay.
Yep.
At a given time.
So take out twenty years from now?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, that's good.
Anything else?
Can you read back?
Yeah, I can. "As we look into the future, we see Kenmore as a place that residents, businesses, and visitors find welcoming with courteous people and that offers a high quality of life to live, raise children, shop, work, recreate, and socialize."
I like it.
Mm-hmm, I like it.
Now, the next, I hate to raise this, but in the next phrase, we do say, "In 2035, we see Kenmore as."
Yeah, but that's okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
I think that would be equally relevant.
Right.
In five years.
Right, yeah, okay, all right.
Great. Are we good on the vision statement? I think we are.
Great job. Okay, so-
Is that working good in that way? Okay.
I can get his attention. All right, next item on the agenda.
All right, is-
Comprehensive Plan Update Regional Transportation Policies.
Right. And so in your packet, I had included a memo that we sent to the city council. There have been, over the last several months, particularly several conversations with Sound Transit and others about high-capacity transit in the city, as well as conversations about water transportation on Lake Washington. And although there are current policies, particularly about the ferry in the shoreline element, and there are general transportation policies that talk about coordination with other agencies, including Sound Transit, we took forward to the city council last night the question of whether they wanted to be very specific about discussing high-capacity transit, particularly light rail, and ferry or other water transportation on the lake. And the resounding response was, yes, they do want that. So we, they want you to address that, and so we'll be coming forward at the next meeting with some new language to go into the transportation element, addressing those two topics. And I don't know if you have anything to add. Debbie was at the meeting last night where they talked about it.
No, there was consensus to do that. There was one council member who was not sure that rail specific, maybe kind of keeping it as rail bus. But when it came to sort of the vote, and it was a sort of a thumbs-up consensus vote, it was add a policy specific to rail. And then again, there was really not a lot of discussion about the question about adding something in the policies for, you know, water, ferry service. That seemed to be, yep, if it makes more sense to have it in the transportation as well as the shoreline element, great, go for it.
We might add that high-capacity transit route is currently shown in Sound Transit plans on SR 522 around the lake, but it's in the future long-range plan. I think the council discussed that it might not happen in any of our lifetimes. Sound Transit 6 or something, I think is what they said. But they still wish and hope that the emphasis will be there to eventually address that. Something about high-capacity transit through Kenmore.
Okay, any comment? None? Yes, answer.
I have a question. So is the benefit of specifically calling those out so that in the event that it does come about, that we can get funding or we can show support that this is in our comprehensive plan? Is that the reasoning?
I don't think it has so much to do with funding, although I suppose it could. But the way it's currently shown in the Sound Transit plan is as high-capacity transit. That could be frequent bus service. It could be bus rapid transit. You may be familiar with, there's a new line on Aurora, for example, and some other places where those buses have elevated stops and they have really fast headways. And they're designed differently. So it could be that, or it could be rail. And, you know, Sound Transit is sort of working years out ahead, and they want to hear from jurisdictions along the potential line what they're interested in. And so we're, we've been in these discussions, and the question is, what is it? And the answer has historically been rail, but it doesn't say that anywhere in the comprehensive plan. And it seemed appropriate to, if that is the direction, to say that.
So my comment is that I find no, I have no objection to any of this being in the comp plan. But I just recall from the whole ferry discussion, which got a lot of attention about five years ago, there's a lot of momentum for it. Councilmember, county council member Ferguson was a big advocate, and he had a lot of influence. And then it came to a crashing, spectacular, explosive- Fail. Like, they did this financial study, and the results were, this thing doesn't come close.
But it's back.
Because.
It's back, there is now renewed interest. We've received a request, is Kenmore interested in looking at sort of a limited passenger ferry service? And if you're interested, where do you think that would leave Kenmore? And what are some of the arriving points that you would be interested in? So they are actually, again, I guess, re-studying, re-looking at that issue as sort of another form of transportation and making connections in the region. And so I guess, you know, we've, as I said, we'd like to at least be considered. Now, how far that will get, again, I don't know. But again, I think that's another reason is there is renewed interest, and the council has said, you know, we're interested in exploring that. So again, if we're interested in exploring it, and we think, we want to, may want to support that long-term, it should be in the comp plan, which it is in the shoreline element.
And I agree with all that. I'm just wondering, what, did anything change? Is there anything in this, I mean, the financial projections where this does not work, doesn't come close, did something change? Or is there just a new political movement to disregard that?
I think this is a smaller operation. It's more like, like, really small.
It's passenger-only route, there's certainly no car. It's really passenger-only and trying to find out maybe limited routes.
Right, and it was almost more like a water taxi, I think.
Yeah.
That sounds like the last proposal.
Can I interject?
Well, did you have comment first or something? Go ahead, Carol.
You know, I sit on the South Lake Union Park Advisory Board, and they actually have an active plan to have water taxis on Lake Union all summer. They will be privately owned, not publicly owned. But they did them on different holidays and different events around the city because it's so hard to get into downtown Seattle. You know, and conceivably, people may enjoy riding a water taxi to a Husky game.
Oh, I think theoretically, it's great.
Or, you know, I don't, I don't really know what the feasible studies were from five years ago, but I'm sure that the whale prices affected that.
Who is bringing it forward, sorry?
I think it's, I think it's, I want to say it's King County, the King County Agency that's bringing it forward. I can provide, I think there's actually a meeting scheduled maybe next week. So obviously, at the next planning commission meeting, I can tell you more.
Okay.
So somebody on the county council must have given us a green light, a committee or something?
Again, I will find out more. There's a letter that came out, you know, we're exploring this, is Kenmore interested? And there was a letter back going, yep, we're interested. And so I think there's a meeting set up next week to at least sort of come to Kenmore and look at some of the options for where a ferry could come and dock and land and what have you. So I'll know more next week about who, what, where, and the rest of it, and I'll bring that forward.
All right. Anything else? All right. Next item on the agenda is Comprehensive Plan Update Introduction and Additional Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
Right. So Debbie mentioned initially, we're now embarking on the review of elements that were to be refreshed. That's what I'm calling it. Not thoroughly updated or extensively amended. Again, what we were trying to do was to hit on changes either that appeared in elements that you looked at, concepts that appeared in elements that you looked at last year, or new factual data, that kind of thing. So I thought what I'd do is just mention some of the high points from each of the three things that are before you tonight. The introduction, the downtown sub-element, and the community design sub-element. And then at your next meeting, it will be land use and natural environment and capital facilities. And what's the fourth one? There's economic development, sub-element. So those four are in process, and we'll be sending those out. So let's start with the introduction. The major changes in the introductions- So, let's start with the introduction. The major changes in the introductions section really had to do with eliminating information about the joint study areas. What used to be our joint study areas have now been annexed by Bothell or by Kirkland. And then, some new information from the countywide planning policies now called Vision 2040. We updated the citizen involvement processes and included, of course, those elements that have come before, parks and recreation, transportation, the bulk of the land use review through the regional business project, et cetera. And then, I added a section on implementation strategies because that wasn't really, it talks about what's in each element and how the goals and policies are laid out, but it didn't really talk about the implementation section, and all of the elements have that particular section.
That's it?
Well, for the introduction, I can go on. I didn't know if you want to take...
No, let's stop there. Any comments on that? All right.
All right, so, everybody's okay with the revised introductions section? Looks like it.
Yes.
All right, the downtown sub-element.
Sorry, I just had one comment on a particular section, the introduction 1-5. Are we going into the details now?
Right, any comments?
Okay, so, that section where it talks about, that as each element is considered, the Planning Commission hosts public workshops, hearings, or uses other public involvement techniques to engage citizens, and then it further states that recent public participation efforts have included webpage updates, direct mailings, as well as, and then it lists all of those bullet points. I was wondering if we might add a specific statement to say that we revised the vision statement with input from the city council, members of, you know, residents or whatever, because it kind of jumps ahead and says, like, we had a public hearing on the revised vision statement, so nowhere does it say that we actually updated the vision statement to make sure that it's still in line with what we see in, you know, 20 years. Does that make sense?
Two bullet points above that, I've noted that there was a public survey on the comprehensive plan, vision statement. I'm not sure, the last bullet is a public hearing on the revised vision statement, and then two above it is the public survey on the vision statement.
Okay. Is the point of this just to state what we did with the public, not to kind of state what the Planning Commission did in preparation for this?
Maybe what we could do is, in that, in that next bullet point, it says, "In addition to soliciting public input towards the preparation of amendments to the plan, we can..."
Yeah, maybe that would be more appropriate.
"...in addition to soliciting and considering public input." Would that help? Does that address your concern?
That, I think that would be a good place, because then it would be logical for us to then prepare the draft goals, objectives, and policies based on the vision statement.
Right.
So, how will it read?
So, at the bottom of page 1-5, the last phrase that's not highlighted reads, "In addition to soliciting public input towards the preparation of amendments to the plan," the commission, and then it goes on to talk about steady current conditions, and then drafts the goals, policies, and objectives based on the vision statement. So, it would be, "In addition to soliciting and considering public input towards the preparation of amendments to the plan," and I could add in vision statement there, too, if that's better.
It could be maybe revising this one bullet point that we removed to say, like, revise or updated the vision statement based on citizen input.
Oh, okay. In fact, it's the second, if you look on page 1-6, it's the second item, which could be modified. We could take that, put that back in, drafted a vision statement based upon citizen input during the visioning process. Should I put that back in?
I think that would be very clear. It would, it would help take away the doubt.
Okay.
Or somebody coming forward with a question.
Yeah, is, I see three, I think.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to put this back in. Okay?
Were you going to change, or Angela, were you recommending changing drafted to revised?
I think revised is probably more appropriate, since we didn't develop it ourselves.
Okay, so we could say, revise the vision statement. Vision statement based upon citizen input during the visioning process.
Thanks.
Okay?
All right.
All right. Other introduction changes, or...
Are we good? I think we're good on the introduction.
Okay. So, the next one that was sent out was the downtown sub-element. And so, the primary things with this sub-element were to move in some of the newly revised language from the vision statement into the element. A more substantive change, that downtown sub-element talks a lot about a pedestrian bridge, but as you recall, I think from the transportation element discussion and other discussions, there's been consideration of a tunnel as opposed to a bridge. So, I had changed the term to a grade-separated crossing of SR-522, not knowing what that might look like. I, of course, acknowledged the building of City Hall and the new focus on the town green and the community building associated with that. And then, I plugged in some information from the Burke Report that was done for the regional business project.
Any comments?
Just a couple, couple little ones.
On 4B2, so the second page, I guess, I think the first sentence there, it talks about shifting the commercial focus, and I'm not sure we're really, well, A, trying to do that, and B, actually doing that, because most of what's going in in the village is residential. We do have a little bit of retail, but, so, maybe adding, or replacing, or revitalizing, or something that we're doing with the Kenmore Village area, but we're not taking it away from Bothell Way.
So, revitalizing the downtown core?
Something like that.
Which section?
It's right at the very, very top of 4B2, so like, it's, it's the sentence that starts on the previous page, but ends on the top of, I use the word shifting.
What's your proposal, Deborah?
To not use the word shifting, to replace it with, what did you suggest, revitalizing?
Right, rather than shifting the commercial focus to the, one way to do it would be, are revitalizing the downtown core.
Any comments? Yes, Angela?
I know in our previous conversations, we had talked about trying to centralize a lot of the commercial focus to downtown core, specifically retail, but I, I guess I kind of agree that, right now, it is really spread out because we have the regional area, which is also commercial, so maybe, maybe shifting isn't the right word, but I'm not sure exactly what is.
Okay. What about expanding?
Yeah, strengthening, expanding, something like that.
Expanding the commercial focus in the downtown core, expanding the commercial focus to, expanding the commercial focus to...
In.
In?
What do you propose, how do you propose it read, Deborah?
Expanding the commercial focus in.
Okay.
The downtown core.
Well, expanding the focus in. So, the old focus was along 522. We're expanding the focus. I would say 2 is probably better for going, for including all of it, because the focus isn't there, wasn't there before.
It was, actually. It was.
And the old language was...
No, I'm just saying, we're, I mean, historically in Kenmore, the focus was in the village. We're bringing that back.
How about, are focusing on the downtown core?
So, read it. Can you read what you mean?
So, it would read, "Most of Kenmore's existing commercial..." Okay. "Recent construction of City Hall and the Kenmore Library, and the proposed construction of the Kenmore Village mixed-use project, the town green, and the community building, are focusing on the downtown core surrounding the intersection of 68th and Northeast 181st."
Or just focus.
Yeah.
Instead of "are focusing on."
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like it needs some sort of description about, because they are located in the downtown core, so what is it really doing for the downtown core? What if it was like, are strength, maybe strengthening, strengthening commerce in the downtown core, or...
I do think if you, the notion that, that the downtown core was going to be the center of the commercial focus is lost if we, if we don't put something in there. I guess I would agree.
Or strengthening commercial activity in the downtown core?
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, basically, Deborah, your question is, what purpose does shifting have in that statement? Are you wanting it to be a more defined, because it does make sense, I mean, especially since I didn't know this language before, but from reading it from my perspective, rather than making, you know, 68th and Bothell Way the core, we're, we've come off the highway a block, and that's what that sentence is describing.
Right, but only one of those things is commercial. I mean, City Hall and the library are not commercial, so you've got the Village mixed-use project that's the commercial.
And the community building.
And the community building will have, yeah.
But it does shift the location of what we think of as the downtown core. Is that why that word is in there?
That, that may be more, is that the intent, sort of shifting the, because, I mean, the word "commercial," I guess, is what threw me, because I don't think we are actually shifting the focus of "commercial."
Well, how about shifting the community focus?
Well, in a way, you are shifting the focus, because what you're trying to do is draw people off the highway into your downtown, which isn't the Bothell Way section. It's here.
Right.
And so, shifting makes sense to me, but you can't call this the downtown focus because there's nothing there. You know, every, if you think of Kenmore and you describe it, you're going to describe it as 68th and Bothell Way, but you've got four corners of, you know, service businesses. It's not really a shopping district or a gathering place, you know, like what our vision really is about. So, shifting it to that other street, 181st and 68th, makes more sense. And that's really why they straightened out 181st, is so we had sort of a main street that wasn't Bothell Way. Is that kind of what this language is trying to describe?
It's definitely not at Bothell Way, but in the new location, but I see Deborah's point as well, that the commercial focus maybe isn't the right. The intent is that eventually it will focus the commercial here, but the things that have been constructed are not there yet. How can I describe this? Help to shift? Hope to shift? Yeah, I don't know. I understand the intent, but there's a lot of Kenmore commercial that isn't kind of, it isn't there now, and it's never going to be there. I mean, we go all the way to, you know, 80th and all along Bothell Way, and there's a lot of commercial there.
Right, but, but the regional business project changes a lot of that.
With the idea that office and multifamily are going to be in a lot of these areas, and that, in fact, the retail core will move here. I mean, that's the goal to this.
So, we're not really describing what was in the past or up until the present. This statement is really describing a vision for the future.
Right.
So, we're, as, as part of the vision statement in the comprehensive plan, it sounds like we're trying to make language that helps to draw the focus into this location.
I'm fine with that. I just, I, yeah, I mean, if everybody else is fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Because I think, you know, in 10 years, it might not be, but right now, that's their plan. That's the stated plan. We want to develop this into a commercial gathering place.
I think you just used the key word here, because when I think about this, we seem to fool ourselves or drift ourselves into thinking that there is a center to Kenmore. There isn't. There never really has been. There was a strip mall out here for a while, but I don't think that's what we're talking about.
No.
What I see happening is, the key word you used that I was thinking of was, we're trying to develop a downtown commercial and residential core for the city. It doesn't exist. We hope that it will. We made some moves in terms of City Hall, and some of the libraries, and some other things to facilitate that happening, but that's a long-term vision of creating something that'll be here maybe 20 years from now. But that also doesn't mean that the commercial business that's along 520 is going to completely disappear. In all the work we've done up to this point, we envision that being more residential than it is today than commercial, but it's, we're still going to see, businesses are going to want to be in 520. So, I don't know if that helps at all, but the revitalize, that doesn't strike me as really what's going on here. We're trying to develop, really from pole cloth, a new commercial residential downtown. That's fine, and I think maybe if we could use some words that speak to that a little more clearly, and that there may be people out there who don't like that idea, that maybe Kenmore does have more of an identity than it really does, but I think that's, that's really what we're doing here. So, we might as well use some words to say that.
Well, does somebody want to propose other language? I'm fine with the way it is. I think it kind of reflects what Mike and Carol are saying. But if somebody has a proposal.
I think what we're trying to struggle with is this, this sentence is sort of mixing existing conditions with what we're hoping to see in the future. So, maybe it's kind of trying to put in some phrasing that recognizes that, that the existing condition is this, and what this new, we're hoping that this recent development will develop or create a downtown. Whatever, however, and that's what we were just trying to figure out, the best way of describing that.
Maybe you can do that offline, but I agree. I think there are multiple thoughts here that are good ones, but they need to be parsed out a little bit.
Right.
And recognize that we're starting from a place that doesn't exist right now.
Right.
Right.
We're trying to move towards something.
Mike, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I think the words "commercial focus" are problematic for me here, because, on the one hand, they're too broad. It can mean many things, right? It can mean many types of businesses, and I think we're looking to develop a certain type of, retail was a word that was mentioned, right? I think we're looking for a more pedestrian-accessible type of business in the downtown core. I don't think we're looking to put... I don't think we're looking to put in a Walmart in the downtown core. I think it is to be smaller businesses, cafes, more accessible shops. So... And I don't think we want to shift any attention away from things that belong, I guess I would say, on 522, like a Safeway, that is a drive-up to a big parking lot type of a business.
I have another suggestion. How about, "Recent construction of City Hall and the Kenmore Library and the proposed construction of Kenmore Village mixed-use project, Town Green and Community Building are creating a walkable downtown core surrounding the intersection of 68th Avenue Northeast and Northeast 181st Street."
That kind of takes away the...
If I nod tonight, I can, I can...
It doesn't fit with the previous sentence that way, but it, it is a reasonable sentence. Yeah.
More accurate. I'm fine with it. So, we got one, two, three, four, five. Five heads are nodding, so I think we can go with it.
The only thing I might
Yeah, go ahead.
Offer in addition to that is, do we want to acknowledge that these are the first, to try to tie into your language, Laurie, are the first steps to creating a downtown core? I like what you said exactly.
Are the first steps to creating a walkable downtown core?
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
We are, we don't want to stop there, right? I think we'd like to see 30 additional
Right.
Locally-owned businesses join
Right.
What we've started with these five examples that we brought up. Or four examples.
To creating a walkable downtown core. Is that, are everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right?
All right.
Other comments on the downtown sub-element?
Denny? Yes, Deborah?
I have on 4B12, the downtown residential district, and now I have to find out where that is stated. Oh, it's toward the top of 4B12. Everywhere else, we talk about what quadrant it's in, and so is that? Is that the northeast? I don't know where that is, the downtown residential area.
I think it's the northeast and the northwest, right?
Yep.
Okay, because we also think of the northwest as the village, too, but, right? I mean, isn't that, that's the northwest right there, across the street.
No, it goes to the north and includes Spencer 68. That's downtown residential.
Oh, okay.
Is that northwest?
Right.
Yeah, so just articulate what that is, I guess. That would be the only comment.
So, the downtown residential district in the northeast and northwest quadrants, to make it consistent. Everybody okay with that? Okay. As long as we're on that page, as I've been going back through all of the comments that were made in, in the joint council meetings that we've had on this project, there was one concern expressed about the downtown sub-element, and, and the council member wanted to be certain that that there was a good bicycle emphasis in the downtown, as well as the walkable emphasis. And I, as I was reading through the sub-element, I felt that there already was a strong bicycle emphasis. It's mentioned in several places. But if the commission was interested, the one other place I thought we could add a word was in this discussion of circulation plan on 4B12. The fourth bullet point reads, it says that the downtown special districts will be linked together by a circulation system with the following features, and then it says pedestrian links throughout city center. And I wondered if you wanted to change that to pedestrian and bicycle links throughout the city center.
I'll, I'll make a motion to say, add bicycles to that.
Any objection?
I have a slight objection.
Oh, okay.
We need to be a little cautious, because there are some concerns about mixed pedestrian and bicycles sharing the same pathways. And we see it on the Burke Gilman quite a lot. I don't know what the right solution is. It's similar to bikes and cars sharing the same pathways, right? And we work really hard to try to separate the two.
Right, and I certainly wasn't intending that these would be joint linkages, but just noting that that by, bicycles aren't, this is the one place where bicycles are not mentioned as far, and since it's discussing the circulation plan, it seemed like that might be a place where bicycles could be added. It's certainly added elsewhere through the plan, and if you all are uncomfortable adding it here, I think it's covered. I think that issue is covered in the downtown sub-element. If this is going to raise questions, then...
Well, I think it is important consideration. I just think sometimes munging it with pedestrians can be problematic. There's this, there's two bullets, you know, kind of specifically. I'm not sure I understand the distinction between walking paths and pedestrian links. Are those different things?
Yeah, I think walking paths and trails are different from, pedestrian links was more sidewalks. All those sidewalks are added, mentioned down below, too, so...
Yeah.
That may be referring to mid-block connectors. That could also refer to mid-block connectors. That's there, too.
I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a...
Right, it is there.
What's that?
Mid-block connectors are already...
I read two bullets down.
Well, I, I would recommend just adding the bike thing as its own bullet, because where you suggested it kind of is right in the middle of four or five bullets that refer to pedestrians, so it's a little awkward.
Yeah, I would not want to... If we're going to address bicycle safety or bicycle access, I think it probably deserves its own. It doesn't seem to detract to do that.
Yeah. So, we can either add it as its own separate bullet.
Maybe you could tell us what the phrase "pedestrian links" actually means.
If I'd been here 15 years ago and written this, I'd be happy to tell you, but I really don't know. And I'm, as I'm looking at it, I'm noticing what you all are looking at, which is sidewalks and pedestrian walkways are, and all are mentioned already. So, it seems very duplicative.
Duplicative.
I think the second bullet is literally referring to the loop.
Right.
Well, that's, that's around, as opposed to through. Those are different, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, let me work on that. Are you comfortable in adding something about bicycles here, or do you want to leave it off the table and just go with the existing policies?
I think it merits adding it, but I don't think it can be added pedestrian and bicycle links.
No, I agree. It would be a standalone bullet if you want to add it here. As I mentioned, I think there are numerous
Other places, isn't it?
Objectives and policies where it's discussed. If it doesn't fit here, let's just not add it and rely on those other policies. It was a single comment made at a joint meeting.
Yeah. I appreciate you being hyper vigilant about that, because it is important, but I don't think it fits in this section.
Do I hear from other?
Mike had his hand up.
Yeah, I, I would agree that, I wouldn't add bicycle into this. I think you've got a section on pedestrian. So, what I would suggest is either leave it as it is, or you do create a separate section for bicycles and pull everything into, just like you have one separate section for pedestrian, separate one for bicycle. But I do want to mention, though, we still are leaving a policy issue on the table here to be resolved, which is, there are going to be times when you have to make a decision. Do you prioritize pedestrian, walking over bicycles? And we're not making a statement about that.
Yeah, I, I think the transportation element actually makes some statements about that, in terms of identifying the priority bicycle network versus the priority pedestrian.
Yeah, I think in the layered plans we looked at, that was, I think there was a really good
Yeah.
Discussion of that.
Right.
But I, I still don't think that that addresses the issue of if you have a capital allocation issue, or if you have some other issue, and how you, you're making some decisions about, what do you want your circulation pattern to rely on? You may not be able to do everything. And you may not be able to emphasize everything equally, so
Right.
What, what is your priorities? And that may be a future discussion. But I think it would be easier to think about that if you had these things called out in separate sections rather than commingled.
Right, so, um, one of the objectives here is to, there's one that talks about specifically a downtown circulation system that deals with pedestrians. And then I'm trying to put my finger on the one. It's link downtown to the rest of the community. This is on page 4B18. Provide safe pedestrian, bicycle, and automobile connections across SR522. That's one place where the bicycle information arises. There's another one in here as well. So, maybe what I could do is pull out those bicycle-related policies from the downtown plan. And then next time, we can decide whether you want to add in something more specific, and you can give some thought to the question of whether you want to acknowledge that there may be situations of conflict and that will have to be resolved, if that's the direction you're headed.
Any objection? No?
Okay.
And Laurie, the thing you said to me about what seems to be the, the, the lack of need for that pedestrian links throughout the city center, I agree with. You've already got walking paths. You've already got sidewalks. I'd be inclined to strike it.
I see two heads.
I don't understand what it means, so I have a hard time
Justifying it.
The question, I think if you strike it, you eliminate future questions, and the focus will be on what the specifics are, the sidewalks and the walking paths and...
And you've provided for all different ways of getting through the city.
Yeah.
So, I think the goal was to make sure that pedestrians could circulate, and those other bullet points describe them very well. Yeah. So, everybody concur with that?
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to take out that pedestrian links comment, because it's covered in the other bullet points. Any other downtown sub-element?
Nope.
One other little one. On 4B14, it references differing, differing design and development standards by district. And
4B14?
Where is that language? Well, anyway, the question is, do we have those? Okay. That kind of relates to the community design sub-element, too. I just, is that, so is that a separate, is that a separate document, then, the design standards? I think I might have asked about that before.
The design standards are all in the municipal code, in the zoning code. They're in a single chapter, but there are different districts where different standards are applied.
Okay, perfect.
All right, anything else on the downtown sub-element?
Okay.
Yes, Angela?
Maybe this is beyond the scope of what we want to take on now, but I, I think the wording of comparing things in relationship to like Lake Point and the plywood supply maybe made sense a long time ago, when it looked like development was kind of, you know, seemed imminent at that time. But it seems, it, it gives me the sense that we're like putting all of our eggs in one basket, when in fact, I think in our downtown core, there are still other areas. Maybe they're not large tracts of land, but they could be developed or encouraged, you know? I mean, there's, there are, you know, vacant land like right across the street from here, and even, you know, down along, near the library and stuff, that I feel like we kind of just like emphasize those two areas rather than talking about the others. I don't know. Kind of just wanted to put that out and see what you guys thought about that.
Is there a language in here that you're
Can you point us?
Yeah, it's, it talks about, yeah, hold on, let me find the specific area. Okay, so 4B3, it is in the section under Opportunities for Development. It states the opportunities for development in downtown Kenmore can be considered in terms of the relationship to Lake Point and the types of uses which are supportable.
4B3?
4B3, at the very top.
Oh, I see.
Mm-hmm.
What are you, what are you proposing?
I think it would need like a pretty substantial revision, but I guess I would propose that maybe we, we not frame things in relationship to Lake Point. I guess it's kind of making the point that Lake Point is the largest area that could be developed, and if it were developed, that it's across the street from our downtown core. But I don't know. If, if that's never developed over the next 20 years, like, I almost feel like it, it, I don't, it, it just doesn't bring up other stuff that we could be doing for downtown.
Carol?
But if you read that section about it, it's just talking about that particular one, because it is an emphasis that as a city, we want to be a part of if something happens. It's not excluding other developments, it's just making a provision for that one.
Anyone else? Angela?
Mike has a comment, I think.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Actually, Angela, you raised an issue that I kind of stumbled over myself. I feel uncomfortable in a lot of these places where we're specifically referencing specific tracts, particularly Lake Point and Plywood Supply. Yeah, they're large tracts, but they're owned by somebody. And I would almost prefer some more generic language. For, I, I have no problem with the language in this one section right here. If you were to turn this to say something more like relationship to Lake Washington waterfront properties, not being specific to Lake, to Lake Point, I think you get, you get a different flavor to this.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think you get a very different flavor, and I think it's a substantive change. I think we have an active existing permit on Lake Point that, and that 520 is going away in a year and a half, and we don't know what's going to happen there. And I, I think it's premature to do much of anything with this statement about Lake Point, myself.
Angela?
So, I would propose that maybe this is something that we add to the proposed docket for the future, because I think if you continue on the next page, it'll say like, "Long-term opportunities, large parcels like Plywood Supply site provide an important resource for large-scale plan development in the future." And again, it, it just reinforces that same message that we are addressing very specific parcels, they are privately owned, we have no idea what they're going to do with it, and not really addressing the rest of our downtown core as a whole.
Okay.
So, do you want to strike those sections, or do you want to add a section that talks about making resources available for other developments in the city?
I think this would take a pretty substantial rewrite. So, I, I don't think that it fits under the scope of what we're doing right now, so I'd like to propose that we add it to a future docket.
Could it be something that we bring up as a question in the joint meeting?
Or would that clutter that meeting too much? Just for, just to get direction from the council.
I don't, well, you can kind of, you could maybe raise it in the context of, I guess, as things change, or maybe you can just bring it in the context, and maybe it makes sense to look at this topic as a future docket item. I don't think it's, again, in the context that we're trying to keep this to not a substantive change... change, I think you've raised a potential issue that could be a substantive change, and then maybe you raise that as a future docket item. Everything that's in here right now is true, because the Lake Point permit is still in place, and so if that permit does move forward, this is still true. If that doesn't happen, or we want to consider, uh, making some different policy suggestions about how you treat development as a whole in the downtown, I think that's, I agree with Lori, it's a substantive discussion and change.
I, I also think that some of these property-specific comments and discussions are the, um, policy basis for those special regulations, the P suffix regulations on those two pieces of property, and as you recall, through the regional business process, we determined that we would not be addressing or amending, um, those regulations, and so I, I guess I would prefer to keep the existing policy language in place at the moment. But again, at some point, it will be important as we see what the future holds to revisit this, the whole topic.
So, I think the proposal is from Angela that we make this a recommended docket item to the City Council for future planning commission consideration. Is there any objection to that?
None.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike?
Well, we're on 4B3. In the title, relationship to Lake Point, the P has remained capitalized, while all others have been...
Thank you. Very much.
All right. Are we good on downtown sub-element? All right. I think we are.
Okay, so the last sub-element for this evening is the, uh, community design sub-element. And some of the things, again, that were addressed here, again, moving in language from the vision statement to reflect that, acknowledging the building of City Hall, and the fact that the design standards have been completed, that's not an implementation task that needs to be taken care of. I, I made one change in this sub-element, which was, uh, in one goal, there was a discussion of a couple of different topics, including views of the waterfront, but there was no goal that talked about increasing the community's connection to the waterfront, and I felt that in the community design element, there should be a goal, uh, that stated that specifically. So, I believe that that is new goal 11. Am I right here? Maybe not. That's right. And so, the existing policies about views to the lake, I moved in under that goal, but then I added a new objective about, so that talked about visual access to the waterfront. Then there's a new objective on page 4C9 that talks about maintaining and enhancing the public's physical access to the Lake Washington and Smamish River waterfronts. And then, uh, in conjunction with that, I mentioned the Parks Recreation and Open Space Element, which is where the concept of the water walk and that kind of thing, where waterfront parks appears. So, that was the most substantive change in this element.
Right. Any other comments? No objections?
No, no, not objections. And I don't know whether it's maybe obvious from that, but, or whether we need to articulate it more, that it's not only kind of waterfront access, kind of once you get to the park or to the water, but it's, the idea, Dave Marin always used to talk about this, the trails to somewhere, so it's the, it's the, you know, it's the pedestrian and bike connections to the places also, and I don't, I don't know exactly how to articulate that, um, because it's not really the circulation path in the downtown, it's, it's kind of between the downtown and the, and the log booms and the squires' landings, and that, you know, it's, it's, how do you get from one place to another? I'm not being very clear, but, um...
Speaking to connections between...
Connections between...
The waterfront points, is that what you're...
Yeah, the waterfront and key points of interest like downtown, or something like that, or, I don't know, something like that.
Okay, so is there a specific language you're talking about and a proposal for changing it?
It would be with respect to 11-2, so it might, I don't, it may be something you can clarify within 11-2-1, or maybe it needs its own little 11-2-2 or something. Because it, public access to the waterfront makes me think of, when I'm in log boom, I want to be able to get down toward the water, as opposed to when I'm in Kenmore, I want to know how to get to the water, and I want to be able to have a circulation path that includes getting there. So, those are subtly different.
So, do we have anything already in the city's design quadrants that require the quadrants to talk to each other for the pedestrian's sake? I mean, this is kind of going back to that pedestrian link thing?
Right, certainly the downtown sub-element talks about pedestrian links through the quadrants, but it doesn't specifically address the waterfront.
So, there isn't, so there isn't a pedestrian, like, where does the pedestrian underpass or overpass come in?
Right, that is in the downtown sub-element.
It is, okay.
Right. The closest thing to talk about linkages is probably in the Parks Plan, where the concept of the water walk, which is all along the waterfront frontage, but still doesn't get to your, um, I think you're looking at something different, which is sort of a broader linkage question, and I, I'm not sure, um, whether the transportation element really gets to that.
I think there's, there is something in, in the Parks Plan too that talks about trails and, and linkages as well. So, I think the question then is, if you, if we find those policies, is it sort of more generic, and are you looking then for something specifically to make those connections from the water to other places? It may not be that specific in the Parks Plan, and if it's not, then it may be appropriate to put it in here.
Okay, yeah.
So, what's the desire?
Oh, well, I thought I just heard Debbie kind of talking about looking at what's existing.
Well, I, I think that there, I, there is certainly things in the Pro's Plan about trails and connections. I, I don't know if it gets down to the level that you were trying to get to of making connections from the waterfront to other places, and if it, if it isn't that specific, and the desire of the commission is to have something specific, then we could add a, a policy in there. So, I guess it's going back to, is, is there a desire of a planning commission to have something that really speaks to connecting the waterfront to other points of interest, if it's not addressed in the Pro's Plan?
Okay, so do we have agreement on that?
Uh, what are we agreeing to?
The count, the staff would come back with language from, excuse me. Well, first, they would look and see if there's sufficient language in the Pro's Plan to describe linkages to the waterfront. If not, they would propose language we would put in here that would describe linkages or a desire for linkages for physical access to the waterfront. Okay? So, we'll ask for that. See what you have. Anything else on the design one? I had a couple. So, Goal 10, this is 4C6. Objective 10.2, integrate landscaping into streetscapes and developments and increase the biomass in the community. So, I see this as affecting that tree-view balancing that I was advocating at a previous meeting.
Right.
So, I don't know how substantive it would be to amend that to, to reflect that desire for view, balancing views and trees.
Yeah, I think what we decided when this topic came up before, that that was its own docket item, that the issue of trees and views was beyond the scope of a minor amendment to existing policies, because you raised it with the natural environment element, I think, and the conclusion was that how trees and views were going to be worked together was a significant policy issue.
So, that you think is beyond the scope of what we're taking up here?
I do. I, I think it fits with that earlier discussion about the natural environment element.
So, can I just ask, since I'm one of the newer commissioners, if this topic comes up, if a topic comes up like this one, and we want to add it to a future docket item, is that something that the staff takes to the...
Council.
The council?
Right.
And they have to basically approve that as being one of the directives they give us, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and they look at the docket every year, and as you can imagine, there are many sources of items. Staff has items they're interested in, the planning commission has items they're interested in, the council has items that they bring forward, and they throw them all in the hopper and see which ones, at any given time, rise to the top. So, that's the way the process works.
So, can we earmark this, so that it comes up?
Right, yeah, I already have it earmarked as a docket item.
And I guess the other thing I thought was, I'm really pleased you put in Goal 11, and given the importance the commission has expressed in the past, and I think in this, this group of commissioners has expressed on the waterfront's importance to the city, you got it down at Goal 11, I was thinking maybe we could put it up at a higher point? I don't know, I guess I'd have to look through and see where it might be best suited, but I would think pretty near the top, considering our identification in the preamble to the vision statement as a waterfront, vibrant waterfront community.
In, in fact, as I'm looking at the goals here, these goals sort of, for the most part, mimic the phrases of the vision statement.
They do.
And, um, perhaps I could reorder them in the same order that they appear in the vision statement.
Great.
Does that work?
That would be great.
All right, any other comments on the community design sub-element proposal? Deborah?
Little one. And this may be docket, I don't know. On Goal 8, which is, starts on 4C3, um, so the, the title is, of course, from the vision statement about attractive functional enduring buildings, but none of the, at least I didn't see any objectives or policies that actually addressed the enduring part of that. And maybe that's because that's all in the design standards, but I don't know.
So, were you thinking in terms of historic preservation, or...
No, I was thinking in terms of design standards, because there was a lot of discussion about how to make enduring buildings instead of wood apartment buildings that deteriorate in 15 years. So, it was really more about development.
Deborah, do you have language to propose?
I don't, and, and, and this, you know, both of these elements made me really hunger for looking at those, um, design standards, because I know there's a lot of language in those, and I don't know whether something could be just pulled out to... It, it almost feels like in both of these sections, there's such a strong pull for those design standards that somehow they need to be referenced. I, and I don't, I don't know if you can do that in a comprehensive plan, but there's so much missing.
In some cases, we reference, uh, regulations in the element, but that's really rare. Um, it does, you know, there is one that we left in about focusing design review standards and guidelines toward downtown and commercial and multifamily. So, I think that the design standards are referenced under that first objective, create a sense of place and identity for Kenmore, and then, um, the second objective, or the second policy under that talks about the design standards. As does Objective 8.2, pedestrian, street design, design and development promotes public safety. So, the design standards are definitely referenced. I'm, I'm not sure exactly where to go with...
Well, it seems like a lot of the policies address the look of something rather than the, um, quality, um, and so, um...
Well, the design standards themselves don't really address quality. They address things like bulk and mass, and there's, there's one small section that talks about permitted material or prohibited materials, but that's, it doesn't really speak to the quality of development, I guess.
Because I, and, and maybe it's no longer in there, but I, I mean, there was months of discussion about design standards for the downtown, um, in, in terms of not building, you know, um, apartment buildings with Audi, um, decks that were wood and, and, you know, wood siding, and I mean, there was just a tremendous amount of discussion about that. I know it's ancient history now, but, um, so I don't even know if it's there anymore.
And those design standards are there, but again, I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing how that translates to enduring. I guess that's my concern.
Well, if you build from, um, masonry and rock and brick and, you know, as opposed to wood, I mean, you're going to have an enduring building. I mean, that, it's a materials issue, I think, and, and a structural issue.
But I think the, the materials and the design standards are more sort of the, the facing of the building. I think it's not going to, the design standards don't dictate that you built a, a brick-and-mortar building, you could build a stick-built building with a brick facade.
Right.
So, I think the design standards are important in sort of creating the, the bones of the development in terms of where you place the buildings on the site and how it functions on the site, but the, the look of the buildings, the materials, that it was more of a palette, more of a choice, uh, rather than a thou shalt build brick, it will be, you know, a certain percentage of the facade has to be something, you know, like brick or something like that, or a certain percentage of the facade has to be, um, you know, windows or opaque, but it doesn't really get to you shall build, you shall build a, you know, a stone building.
Yeah, well, we're not having it in front of me, it's hard to reference, but, um, anyway, so the comment was just that there didn't look like there was anything addressing how to get enduring buildings, buildings that will last and not look bad in five years, you know? Because a lot of the buildings that are, I mean, that's a complaint, is a lot of the buildings that are, you know, currently in the downtown area, you know, were built cheaply, for lack of a better term, um, not, not the recent, not the very recent stuff, but the, um, and certainly not the public investment, but the, um, private investment in terms of apartments and things. So, um, but if, I mean, if it's already covered elsewhere, then that's fine.
I, I don't think it is covered elsewhere, but I, I think what you're asking for is a, a policy that would, uh, speak to regulating the quality of development, which... If they meet the code, they meet the code, but we don't ask them to go above and beyond that. And so, I, I'm still struggling with, I think in terms of enduring buildings, the concept was that you would have a building where, or a downtown where the site design and the pedestrian scale amenities and that kind of thing make it an attractive place that will endure... will endure and be a downtown. I'm not sure that it really was focused on the sense of enduring in the terms of, in the sense of building materials and your buildings are, you know, the brick house and not the straw house. I don't think we have anything that really addresses that. So that, to me, is a new concept.
Yeah. So maybe it's a docket kind of thing? I mean, because it's, it's, it sounds like it's not in there.
I don't think it is.
Do you think? I do notice that under the first policy, under that objective, we say through development quality. Is that, isn't, that, that seems to speak to that idea of making sure that people who are developing are doing a quality job, right? I don't know how we actually ensure that, but we say it here.
Again, it's the sense of quality in the sense that it's the way the building is laid out, it's the pedestrian connections through the complex, it's the upper-level step backs, it's quality, design quality, I think, rather than the.
Construction.
Built, right, the construction quality. And the construction quality, it's not that it's unregulated, of course, it's regulated through the building code. So if you wanted to address that, I suppose a policy could be added about making sure that buildings meet current standards, or something like that, that meet current construction standards, or.
But I mean.
Because we talk about design, but we don't really talk about construction standards.
But that would be just the code, you mean, the construction code?
Right.
Yeah. It's up to you guys. I, I mean, you heard what I said, so.
Mike?
Yeah, I don't think adding that proposed language you just suggested makes the fact any more true, right? Adding that fact to the master plan doesn't make the regulations to follow of the building code any more enforceable. They are as enforceable as they are, and whether or not they're referenced in the master plan doesn't make them more enforceable.
Right.
I think where, and I'm not speaking for you, Deborah, but I think where this conversation has taken us is the disconnect between the use of the vision statement in the goal language and the literal mapping that we might be trying to do here towards the objectives and the policies. And I don't think that was meant to be literal connect-the-dots exercise, right? Not everything that's stated in the goal is necess, this is my interpretation, correct if I'm wrong, but not everything that's in the vision statement that then finds itself in a goal is 100% supported in goals and objectives. Is that true?
I would imagine that's true. I don't know that for a fact, but I would think that's true.
I think if we were to go through each of the goals, we may find things that we cannot find an exact literal reference to in the, in the policies and the objectives. And I think we just have to be okay with that or not. Otherwise, there's an awful lot of work we'd probably have to do.
Yeah. I'll make one other comment, and then I'll be quiet. But when I read this, create attractive, functional, and enduring buildings and places, I think what comes to my mind is that if you make attractive places, they end up on somebody's list 50 years from now, as like, that is such a beautiful place, that is such a beautiful building, that it needs to be protected forever. So that's why I asked about historic preservation. So what I was thinking of was making buildings beautiful so that they would endure, because nobody could bear to knock them down, to put something in their place. That's what I was thinking of.
That was definitely not the intent of this original goal statement.
Oh, okay. See, I don't have that history.
Because it was a lengthy discussion about it, so I remember it.
I would say that's an, I wouldn't read that that way, enduring that way. If it were up to me, I would strike enduring and just say, create attractive and functional buildings and places. Whether they are attractive for some length of time is speculative. Mike?
Again, I think the reason that word is there is because we chose to put it in the vision statement, and it seemed like a nice way to bring that language, it's word for word, and many of these are word for word.
Right.
And it seemed like a useful way to bring our aspirations of the vision statement into the more actionable and executable parts of this document. And I think as long as we're willing to look at the goal statement as the more aspirational part of this section of the master plan, and not look for the code enforcement section of the word enduring, I think we can be okay. Look at that as kind of the high-level reference to what this represents, right? Otherwise, what's going to happen if we kind of go from the ground up, if we go from our policies as influencing or informing our objectives, and then our objectives informing our goals, we're going to get really, really literal about what our goals are. Otherwise, right?
And then it ceases to be a vision statement, it becomes.
Well, I'm not even getting as far as saying we map these goals all the way back to our vision statement. The vision statement was meant to be aspirational, and we do want enduring, attractive, and functional buildings. We've borrowed that language here to influence our goals. But I think at that point, we almost have to separate ourselves when we get to objectives and policies and say, now let's start getting to things that matter on a year-to-year basis, not 20 years out.
Anything else? All right. Laurie, anything else on?
I don't have anything.
The design sub-element, and I think we've satisfied that element of the agenda. Is there any new business? Any questions? So I see on the upcoming meetings, we've got March 31st, which you've already warned us will be a big one. Might go long. April 7th meeting is canceled. I think we all got an email encouraging us to attend the workshop.
Yes.
Can you give us more detail on the workshop? How does a workshop differ from a public, or an open house?
A workshop implies that you will be doing something. An open house, you show up. So a workshop.
What are we doing at the workshop that you're inviting us to attend?
I don't want to keep the game away, but the.
Really? It's a game?
No. Well, no, there are, there's going to, it's sort of.
They're wagering, aren't they?
It will be interactive, how about that? So there'll be a presentation, who's kind of outline, you know, some of the highlights from, he's done past keynote speeches. At that time on Tuesday, we'll have spent, you know, a day and a half in Kenmore, so he can kind of relate some of his ideas to be more Kenmore-specific. And then there are several, I guess, exercises where it will involve participation from those folks that show up to kind of develop that, some ideas for love of Kenmore, I guess. So he's got some really, really neat ideas. And so I think it'll be thought-provoking, and I think also, as it is a workshop, you'll have the opportunity to sort of participate with, you know, a group of folks that you're there with, and hopefully come out of that with some, some new ideas.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else? There being no new business, I hereby adjourn this meeting.
So Deborah, I'm on the mailing list for the. Oh, how did you? Oh, okay.